At 5:30 PM. I've got the next part too, don't I?
Yeah.
And so, so now we're taking up item E4, which is a resolution authorizing the city manager to execute a real estate sales contract for the sale of property located at 1509 Willow Street and declaring an effective date.
I move to adopt.
Second.
Motion second. No discussion. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign? Okay, ayes have it. Very good. So that completes our resolutions. No city manager reports, and we have one. We do have a little work session, don't we Lynn?
We do.
We'll let you get, get started.
I'll get started Lynn, yeah.
Okay, sounds good. Well, we're here this evening, once again, to take up the discussion of our five years after improvement program. And then of course update that and, and roll on a new year onto the program. So the agenda for this evening, as we move through this, we want to go back and review what we did last year in April of 2016. And since then, we've completed some projects, so we're going to remove those. Gilbert and his staff have worked to update how much funding will be available, actually through 2022. We'll go through and kind of review our ongoing projects, add the new planning year, 2022, to our planning window. And then staff will have a list of recommended projects for you to consider. And we'll also show you some other needs that are out there that are not necessarily included, but they are needs. And hope, and we'll leave time for discussion and questions. And then hopefully, at the end of the night, our desire would be to get some consensus, maybe some direction specifically with the 2018 projects, as they will be driving our budget development as we move forward over the, throughout the summer here. And of course, I'm gonna leave time for discussion and questions, but if, really, if you have a question any time during the presentation, please just stop me and let's try to address it while we can. So a year ago, April 2016, we met. And at that time, as we went into that evening, we had a planned project list through 2020, amounting to $132.6 million. That evening Gilbert had identified $182.2 million available through 2021, which if you do that math, leaves $49.6 million unappropriated. So that evening, staff made a list of recommendations to you that resulted in a net add of $49.6 million, consumed all of the unappropriated money, and left zero unappropriated. That net increase of $49.6 million consisted of about $51 million worth of new projects, and some, about a million dollars in deleted projects, and some changes to our seal coats. But all told, that left us then with a planned project list through 2021 of $182.26 million. And if you remember that evening, we used a interactive internet-based program to show you what projects we were recommending. And we, it looked just like this. In fact, this is it. We were able to zoom in on those projects and talk about them individually. We're going to do something very similar tonight, but it's not necessarily the same program. The, the complete list of planned projects amounting to $182.26 million is available. It's in your binder that we gave you. I think the third tab from the back says April, projects April 2016. That list looks like this, basically a spreadsheet of, of projects and funding. The new projects we recommended adding that night are shown in this orange color. The white projects are projects that were already in there. Again, they amounted to a sum total of $182.26 million. Okay. So then in July, when we were going through the budget process, we, we were faced with declining tax appraised values, which eliminated debt capacity that we thought we would have. It also, we were also faced with sales tax receipts, lowering sales tax receipts. And so we had to come back during the process and delete some projects to, to bring that planned project list down to meet the available funding. And so in July, we eliminated $10.75 million worth of projects from the CIP. That included projects like rebuilding Woodway subdivision streets, Bridle Ridge, Nursery Road. We deleted Vista Del Sol, Street Rehab, and portions of Juan Lynn and Pleasant Green. That brought our planned project list down to $171.5 million. And that list is shown in the second to last tab on your, in your binder there. Looks much the same, only the, the total at the end is $171.5 million. So then that brings us up to the night. Here we are, March 2017. We've completed a, a number of the projects that were in that April and July planned project list. Other projects that were in there as estimates, now we've bid, and so we've been able to change the amounts in the planned project list to act, to, to match actual contract amounts, not just the estimates. So that reduced our, the, the total cost of our planned projects. So as we sit here this evening, we have planned projects through 2021, amounting to $157.7 million. Now Gilbert, again with his staff's help, has gone in and updated the funding and made some estimates moving forward. And he's identified $173.3 million of available funding through 2022. Now, there are a couple assumptions in that number, one of which is that the sale of the Navarro del Norte property goes through within the next few months. So that, those sales proceeds are in that number. Additionally, he's made some, some projections, predictions moving forward on what he thinks sales tax receipts are going to be, and ad valorem tax receipts. And so this also assumes that those assumptions, that those predictions are correct. If we continue to see a downturn in those, well then, obviously, or if the sale of Navarro del Norte falls through, well then we'll obviously have to come back and, and readjust this. But for this evening's presentation, we're assuming that this $173.3 million is available through 2022. If you do that math, you can see there's $15.6 million available, unappropriated, available for projects going forward. This evening, staff is prepared to recommend to you a list of additions and deletions to this CIP that will net out to a $13.65 million add going through 2022. It will leave almost $2 million unappropriated in 2022. And it will bring the planned project list up to 100, back up to $171.3 million. Okay, again, this evening, we have an inter, active internet-based little presentation here to show you, to, to help us walk through the projects. It looks a little different. It is a little different. But I think it, I think it's a good graphical display for you. So I want to talk about the, the navigation of this so you understand what you're seeing. You'll see up here, we have tabs for the ongoing projects, and then for each of the five years in the planning window, 2018 through 2022. And under each of these tabs, we have three categories of projects. We have a residential street category that makes up, it's made up of the projects that we are included in our residential street rehabilitation, our residential street improvement program. Then we have our maintenance projects here. We call reclaimed seal projects. Those are also in the residential street improvement plan, but they're in there as maintenance-type projects. And then we have additional projects, which are basically anything else, but it's primarily utility projects, water and wastewater line projects, as well as thoroughfare projects. And so, the other thing I wanted to talk about, the navigation. Whenever you see these blue tabs on here, or they're marked in blue, the projects are marked in blue, that means they're a project that's already in our planned project list before tonight. It's not something that's added. When you see one in red, and I'll call it to your attention when we get to those, but those are projects that we're proposing to be added tonight. And rather than just show you the additional projects like we did last year, I kind of want to walk you through all the projects quickly, because I, I, I think there's a lot of, I remember last year, there was a lot of questions generated about, what about this project? Isn't it in there? Yeah, but it wasn't added one. And so I, I think it's just a good reminder to, to go through those. And we can, most, a lot of these you've seen. Now, these ongoing projects are projects that are either currently under construction or are currently in the design phase. If you look at our residential street projects, most of these projects are very close to being completed. All the hot mix is down, the streets are rehabbed. All we're waiting for is for the valves and manholes to be adjusted, and then we can close out the paperwork and finalize the project. What you'll see here, Anthony Road from Rio Grande to Hanselman. Bottom Street from south to the city limits. The Children's Park, as the mayor brought up earlier, was resurfaced, rebuilt. Southwest Ben Jordan, from the concrete section just west of Laurent Street, on to the railroad tracks at Hand Road. A portion of Lone Tree Road from Burlesville Road to the end of the city maintained portion there. And then Sparkman Road from Lone Tree to US 59. Both Holt and Hartman Road. And a section of Hanselman Road and a section of North Street. All of those, as I said, the paving's done, but we haven't closed them out, so they're still shown here as ongoing projects. In the maintenance projects, the reclaimed seal, these are the projects that you approved this evening by resolution, resolution E2. The Colony Creek outliers, Wayside Terrace, Putney Moore, O Victoria South. Those are those same projects. And then additional projects include things like the Tower V pump station and Plant Four demolition. We're fixing to bid that. We'll probably advertise that just in a couple of weeks now. That one's ready to go. That will enable us to move the pressure plane in town and provide more citizens with a higher pressure water. And also will allow us then to demolish Plant Four, which is over off Derry and Hoover Road, and then be able to put that property back on the market and back on the tax rolls. This Tanglewood subdivision level up was actually approved tonight as part of the Seal Coat project, but that's shown here as a, as a, as a other project. Of course, the section of Red River Street between Ben Jordan and Laurent, that's currently under construction. Placido Benavides Drive, which is, we're ready to bid. Design is done. We're waiting on finalizing right away acquisition. Hopefully that'll move forward soon.
Lynn?
Yes.
The drawing on Placido Benavides, is it fairly accurate? Or is that just a concept?
It's conceptual, but it's fairly accurate. I mean, it, it is conceptual.
Thank you.
Oliver Welder subdivision, that's basically De Leon and Wheeler Streets reconstruction. And we're, we're not only reconstructing them, but we're adding curb and gutter there to De Leon, Oak, and a section of Staton. North Heights, continuing on with our North Heights. Remember, that's the, the section where we're methodically moving through the neighborhood, doing utilities one year, coming back and doing that street the next year, and, and leapfrogging along. This would be North Heights Utilities Phase Three, Brazza Street. That is currently under construction. Water, water and sewer lines are, we, we think that project will be close to complete in May. The next phase will be Colorado Street. It's currently in design, and we think we'll be bidding it in about May. Then we've got the re, rehab overlay of those streets. Phase two is Trinity Street, and it is currently under construction. And Brazza Street, and Trinity's almost done too. Manholes that need to be adjusted. Brazza Street is currently in design. The Twin Nineties, out off Kelly Creek Drive. We're waiting on some dry, dry-up time so the contractor can do that job. The materials are on hand, in place. Just experiencing some wet weather there. The design of a signal project at Loop 463 in Millet. Where, that, that design contract will be coming before you very soon. Bless you. And then, of course, our downtown water, utility, water and sewer projects. Downtown Phase Three, seven, eight, and nine, that's the project that's going on in the North Street area, kind of east of Five Points, North Street Power. That project, the utility work is done. What's left to do is pavement repair. Contractor's working on it. We think they'll be done there in a couple of months. As you move west of Moody Street, the northern part of that project, that's Phase Four, projects four, five, and six, I mean, one, two, and three, excuse me. Those are under construction, but pretty early in, in the stage. I think you've probably got a year to go there. And then the southern part of that area, four, five, and six, is the, is the project that we had to resend the bid on two weeks ago at, at this meeting. And so we will be moving forward with rebidding that. The Berkman Drive diversion sewer, that project is ongoing. That is the project that will divert all the wastewater coming out of the North Crest area into the west trunk main of the city. And by doing so, free up capacity in the east trunk main to provide for additional growth around Loop 463, going around the east side of the city. And then you've got two wastewater projects going on at the regional plant. A SCADA project, which will basically put all of our computer controls on one platform and tie them together so that will give us much better monitoring and control of our equipment. And then a de-watering project, which will replace a very old belt press at that plant. So that's all our ongoing projects. Now, as we look forward into our planning window, look at 2018. Our residential street projects consist of North Heights Phase Four, which is Colorado Street. And then a new project that we've added, you can see the red tab there, is Springwood, replacing the streets in Springwood, rebuilding those streets in Springwood. Estimated at $1.6 million. You'll see it does not include Springwood Drive, because that one was already done. But, but the, at the rate that those streets are failing, we feel like it's important to get on it as quickly as possible. And we, we, we predict that we will have the funding to do so in 2018. Our maintenance for 2018 includes seal coats for Country Club, Country Club Village and Benchmark, Tropical Acres, and Highland Estates and North Crest Estates. Other projects for 2018 include the rehabilitation, rebuilding of Vine Street between Mockingbird and Red River. That's a one point, almost $4 million project. We need to, we need to rehab Water Tower Six. That's the project out off Nursery Road across from West High School. That tower was built in 2000, went online in 2001. And when you drive by, you can see it's, it's in need of a paint job. So we'll need to go in there, blast it, remove any spent material, see if we've, what, what metal losses occurred, replace that metal, and then repaint with it, hopefully get a 20-year life out of.
Lynn, on these projects, I mean, there's certainly subject to change.
Absolutely.
Yeah.
Absolutely. Their recommendations at this, at this point.
But they're not likely to get better on their own.
They're, they're not going to get better on their own.
Specifically, I, I wasn't gonna say, but Vine Street, you know, the section from Red River up to, well, up the hill there's, I see nothing wrong with it, but it's from the entrance to the park on down. Yeah, it's horrible. Today, you know, you have to really slow down. That's why I was saying.
It's between Mockingbird and Red River.
Red River?
That's what we're talking about doing. That's where it's really falling off. You can see the roads falling off.
I would say Mockingbird to, and I don't know the street name.
You're saying Red River to McRae.
Is that McRae? I should know that. Not so bad, but from there to Mockingbird is, is very bad. That's why I'm just, just thinking, I mean.
Magnolia, or whatever it is.
About half of it is, I could see as a candidate.
The northern half is, is much worse.
Yeah, we'll get to that whenever, if you're able to.
Okay. Continuing on with North, North Heights Utilities, Guadalupe Street, that's Phase Five, would ha, would occur in 2018. The rest of Red River, we're, we're recommending for 2018, from Main to Laurent Street.
Can't have it fast enough.
The, the first phase of Crestwood, we're recommending for 2018. That would be Main Street to Navarro. There's a residential sidewalk project included in here. And let me explain this. You'll see this map time and time again when we talk about sidewalks. Those, the projects that are in the CIP right now are in determined locations within the city. Only differentiation there is, is whether we, we're titling them residential or thoroughfare. And that's simply because of the available funding. If they're a thoroughfare project, we're proposing that they be funded from sales tax. If they're a residential project, then we're proposing they be funded either from, more likely from general fund. And so what you see here in red is a gap map. Basically, it shows areas within the city where there, or there are sections of missing sidewalk. And so every time we talk about a sidewalk project tonight, we'll just, this same map will be up there. And then a new project for 2018 that we're recommending is Nursery Road, Nursery Drive Phase One. That's the section, the worst section, from Tropical Drive to Lake Forest. We took Nursery Road in its entirety out last year in July, because we didn't have the funding. And we can't fit it all in in 2018. But we would recommend doing this section in 2018. We think the funding will be there for that. 2019, moving right along. Residential streets. The first project you'll see here is the Downtown Overlay Three project. That includes rebuilding Main Street from Commercial to Rio Grande, Bridge Street from North to Rio Grande, North Street from Five Points over to the railroad tracks behind 700 Main, and Staton Street from Moody back to Main Street. That's a $1.8 million project that will come on the heels of finishing up those utilities there. And then North Heights Phase Five, which is Guadalupe Street. We saw the utilities for them in the previous year. The maintenance projects we're recommending for 2019, there's only one. It's a very large project, involves seal coating all of North Crest. Estimated to cost $2.2 million. Additional projects for 2019. Another section of Crestwood, this being from Navarro to Laurent. We've included. A section of Juan Lynn between Ben Jordan and Ben Wilson. That's the section behind the ballparks there. It's in bad shape. North Heights Utilities Phase Six, there's only seven, so we're getting, by here, we're getting close. Then the section of North Street from the railroad tracks behind 700 Main on over to Navarro. We had picked that up in 2019. And then we'd have another sidewalk project, although this one would be a thoroughfare project.
Can I make a comment about sidewalks?
Yes ma'am.
Just because we're talking about them. I saw a woman on a walker in the middle lane on Rio Grande, just in the middle between traffic lights. And I've, I've found myself since then wondering about the sidewalks much more than I had before, because there was really, I mean, it was horrible seeing her standing in the middle of Rio Grande, you know, seven lanes. But if she had tried to go to a traffic light, which would have been a long distance anyway, there weren't sidewalks to get her there. And when she crossed, there weren't sidewalks to get her back. And it really has made me stop and think that I've heard a lot about, we don't have sidewalks, but it really is a serious situation. I just wanted to say that and let people think about it.
Okay. We're ready to move on to 2020. Residential streets for 2020. What we're proposing, of course, the North Heights Phase Six, that's San Antonio Street on the street work. Three new projects that we're proposing to add. Woodway subdivision, in its entirety, would come back in this year. And two sections of Bridle Ridge. We had to, in order to make these subdivisions fit in the funding, we had to break Bridle Ridge into four sections. We're proposing to do two of those sections in 2020. 2020 maintenance projects would include seal coating, Cherokee Hills, that Hillcrest addition lies on both sides of Main Street, around the park area. Sam Houston Heights, Shenandoah, and Fleetwood. And other projects for, for 2020 include another section of Crestwood. Actually, this will be the last section of Crestwood, Laurent to Ben Jordan. The final utility project for North Heights Edition. 2020, we're proposing to come in with Phase Three of the, actually Phase Two of the ASR project. And that will come on the heels of the completion of the demonstration project we're doing now, which is set to conclude in mid-2019. So assuming it shows what we think it will show, that it is a valid new water source for the city, then we would propose in 2020 to come along and, and make an investment into ASR. And then there are two sidewalk projects planned for 2020, one thoroughfare and one residential area.
And Lynn, those sidewalk projects will be what money's available, then you pick and choose from the inventory of where they're worst needed.
That's correct, yes ma'am. And we, typically $50,000.
What did the one on Salem cost recently? Anybody have that number?
Thirty-five? Thirty-five thousand.
So from the entrance of Castle Hills up to?
Dairy Road.
Thirty-five thousand dollars?
And that was CDBG money gone?
That was CDBG.
Yeah. Okay.
Okay, 2021 residential streets, final phase of North Heights. That's Nuasis Street. We finished that up in 2021. Two new projects. One is Vista Del Sol that we took out last July. We're, we're proposing to put it back in here in 2021, and also pick up a third phase of Bridle Ridge in 2021. The maintenance for 2021 is pretty extensive. Lots of projects include seal coating in Simiron, Gulf Coast Industrial. Gulf Coast Industrial Park. Deer Chase. Red River Heights. Oak Haven. Then all those along Ben Jordan, Waterstone, Riada, Silverado. The Meadows. Regency. And finally, uh, Parkstone. And by the way, at the end of this year, when we complete these, if you remember, in our residential street improvement program, we showed 80 miles of streets that needed maintenance. We were already behind on maintenance on. And those were all listed there. In 2021, these projects will complete that 80 miles. Now, since then, some more have rolled on, but we're, we're getting caught up. It's, it's, it's paying. Additional projects for 2021 include, now, 2021 also is when you see some big utility projects. If you remember, uh, from Gilbert's presentation and from the Residential Street Improvement Program Plan, uh, 2021, we start getting a lot of debt capacity because we're retiring those revenue bonds. And so that's the year we come in and we start doing water and sewer line replacements in some large neighborhoods in preparation for a subsequent street rebuild project, uh, that would come when the tax-supported debt service does the same thing in 2024. Uh, but you'll see projects like $6 million bond air utility replacement. Eight and a half million dollar Tanglewood utility replacement.
Yay.
There's two sections of North Street shown here, uh, because we originally broke it into sections trying to make it fit, and then we were able to make it, we were able to get it all in here in 2021. So basically, it's, it's North Street to the railroad tracks behind the service center. And then the next section's from those railroad tracks on to Laurent. So really, it's, it's Navarro to Laurent in 2021. Uh, there are still, there's still a $1 million project in this, uh, planning window for a railroad quiet zone at an undetermined location within the city. And if you remember, we have a report that shows lots of different, uh, intersections and where they could be, what, what, uh, quiet zone work was needed in order to make that, uh, available for a quiet zone. So this is just a million dollar set aside for a project at one of those locations.
That quiet zone has made a big difference, uh, in the area long, I guess, Rio Grande. Um, because now you're aware when there's a, an engineer that's, they have the option of blowing their horn, and you're more aware of when someone does. Makes you aware of the, the impact of the quiet zone, you don't hear it as much.
Uh, so there's another thoroughfare sidewalk project in 21. And then we're proposing to add back in, uh, the other part, other half of that nursery drive, the part from Tropical back down to Loop 463. We can make it fit in 2021. And then, of course, in 2022, all the projects are going to be red because it's a new planning year, and we're, we're recommending all these projects to be additional. But under residential streets, we would finish up Bridle Ridge and Saddle Brook Phase Four. Uh, we propose to add North Crest Highland Estates North. And the original town site Southwest, which is some of that area that's currently being, uh, the utilities are being replaced on. Uh, so this then again would come following, subsequent to that, uh, utility replacement. Our maintenance projects, because we completed that 80 mile list, had to reach down and grab some, some other projects. And so what we're proposing, uh, for 2022 is Bell Tower and, uh, Greenbrier. Uh, Greenbrier, if you'll remember, was, we rebuilt those streets in 2010 and 2011. By the time we get here, they'll have 11 years on them and they'll need, they'll need maintenance. And additional projects for 2022 include more utilities for, in preparation for, for street, residential street work, Airline Terrace Utilities. College Park Utilities, 3.17 million. We're proposing to rebuild Dairy Road from Hoover Street down to Salem. Uh, this is a project that's been on the list. We've had to move it in and out and, and, but we, we still think it's a worthy project. It's roughly $3 million, and a, a pretty good amount of that money is, uh, results from the drainage work that we'll need to do there to close in those deep ditches in order to put curb and gutter in there. And build sidewalk. Uh, once we finish Bridle Ridge, we'll need to do that first section of Edinburgh from Navarro over to Joplin to complete that work. Lynn Thurman Utilities, again, in preparation for, uh, upcoming street work. And finally, North Street from Laurent to Ben Jordan. Uh, that, that will only leave the section of North Street between Ben Jordan and Ben Wilson left to do. So, uh, before I move on, I just want to say, even though we're faced with, uh, uh, you know, less revenue than, than, than we'd hoped to see, and the tax proceeds are, are down, this is still a very aggressive CIP. And over the next five years, completes a lot of things. It completes the, the 80 miles of, of maintenance will be done. North Heights Utilities and Street Work will be completed. Red River will be completed in its entirety. Crestwood will be completed in its entirety. North Street will be complete, all except for that one section that, right in front of the community center there, from Ben Jordan to Ben Wilson, and hopefully you can pick it up in 2023. And Tanglewood and some of those big, uh, subdivisions that, where, where we know the streets are in bad need of rehab, but we just, we won't spend the money on them until we have, we, till we can replace the utilities. Within this CIP planning window, you're starting to see some of those big utility projects go into Tanglewood and Bonheur and College Park and Lynn Thurman. So, pretty aggressive CIP, but, uh, and, and really, I think accomplishes a lot of stuff. Are there any questions before I move on on any of these projects?
Did, on Crestwood Phase One and Phase Three, I can't remember the exact values. Is it possible to swap those two? I think the section from, uh, Ben Jordan to Laurent is worse than Main to Navarro.
I don't want to say it's not possible to. I don't recommend doing so. Uh, I recommend starting on one end and moving through, because when you start in the middle.
This wouldn't be the middle, because we don't need to do from Sam Houston to.
Ben Wilson. So you mean start at Ben Wilson and go to.
It doesn't go to Ben Wilson.
Start at Ben Jordan and go to Laurent. Oh, that's possible. We can look at that, certainly.
It's a lot worse down there than it is towards the Main Street side.
We can look at that.
0.8 million difference.
I'm, I'm sorry, I misunderstood you. I thought you were saying.
It's 800,000. It's 4.31 for the third one and 3.53 for the first one.
Uh, that, that would be my only recommendation.
Okay.
I mean, you got, that roadway just looks like it's barely hanging on top of it. It's all spider wire there. It's terrible on that side.
Yeah, because when you were talking about Red River, you went the opposite direction towards Main. And it kind of, I thought the same thing. Why are we going from Main this way when you told us we had to go this way?
Well, you just don't want to start in the middle section.
I still want to start in the middle.
The middle section's bad too, in front of the school there, but I think further down towards Ben Jordan, back towards Laurent would be the, a better way to start if we can get that $800,000 resolved.
We can build it either way. I just, starting in the middle is.
Yeah, yeah, well, I understand.
Yes.
I think last week we said something about Guy Grant, um, but that, and I'm, I guess I'm talking about the section between Mockingbird and Salem. That's not in here at all, is that correct?
It is not in there at all, no ma'am.
Used to be. I think I brought it up about four years ago, but we just can't.
Yeah, and, and we've talked about it.
That's a big one.
Covering up the big ditch.
I remember you were talking about Ball Airport.
Do we have to cover up the big ditch? I know we'd like to, but do we have to?
I think we should, but.
No, you don't have to, but every time we've discussed it in the past, I, I think that's been the goal, is to, to close in that deep drainage ditch. And that's, it's very, make, really increases the price of that project. I don't remember the exact numbers, but I know it's, it's expensive because of that deep ditch.
It's, it's just with this past rain, there were so many potholes in it that, you know, I'm wondering about it.
We can always consider just rebuilding the roadway without doing the ditch.
I don't think that's our recommendation, though. When we get in there, and it may be how we look at, we, we were talking the other day about, are we fixing potholes or are we fixing the street? And that may be one of those candidates where we need to quit calling it pothole repair. We just need to do some street work in there. So.
Okay, I'm gonna move along. Uh, so a complete list of these projects is in the very last tab of your binder, uh, labeled Projects March 2017. And the, the new projects that we're proposing to be add are shown in this light blue color. And again, they total 171.3 million dollars. So that's the, the, that's the whole list of projects. I, I've also shown you here a list of additions and deletions, because we hadn't talked about deletions. But we are recommending some deletions in order to make these projects fit. In 2018, we've talked about adding Nursery and Springwood. In order to make the other, make these projects work, we recommend deleting Northside Road Annexation Phase Two. And, and let me say, when I, when I say we recommend deleting, that doesn't mean that the project's no good, or the, we won't, we recommend never doing the project. We just recommend removing it from this planning window because other, in our opinion, there are other priorities. Uh, and that's just our recommendation. That, the, the decision obviously is, is the city council's decision. But in order to make the numbers work out, something's got to give. There's, which can't add without, uh, exceeding the available funding. So that Northside Road Annexation Phase Two basically involved replacing the sewer line in Ball Airport between, uh, Glasgow and Mallett. Upsizing that to provide downstream capacity for a future annexation that would occur on, on Northside Road and Capstone Estates. Uh, in 2019, we proposed to delete Phase Three of that, which is the big, the big project. Extend, building a lift station extending utilities along Northside and up into Capstone. Uh, that project estimated, and of course, rebuilding the roads once we're done, because we're gonna tear them up pretty good. Uh, that, that project's estimated at 7.6, and so we had to move it out in order to move some of those large thoroughfare sections in that we talked about earlier.
Uh, Lynn?
Yes.
Um, wasn't, um, go back a page or two just now. Uh, Springwood was the one that's, um, it was a country subdivision, one acre lots with wells. Is that the one?
No.
What was the name of that one?
Whale Springs is probably what you're thinking. Are you thinking about Whale?
Oh, you're talking about Capstone?
Capstone, that has Whale Springs Road.
I'm sorry. I stand corrected. We're not doing anything with Capstone, are we?
That was that annexation project that we're, we just talked about maybe taking out, deleting?
Okay.
Would be to serve that.
Okay.
Would be to provide for annexation of that. Uh, in 2020, you can see, we've already talked about adding Woodway and two phases of Bridle Ridge. In order to make that work, uh, we're proposing to take out, uh, the Mallett Intersection Improvements, which were improvements we talked about making at, uh, Zach Lance and Mallett. Also at Mallett and Briggs, and at Mallett and Ball Airport. Not that they're worthy pro, not worthy projects, they are. We just can't afford to do everything else that, in that at the same time, and so we're proposing to push that back. Uh, Castle Hills West, also the re, rehabilitation of those streets, uh, we're proposing to defer. Uh, it was originally in 2020. Additions, we've talked about for 2021 already. The only other deletion would be Mesa Verde, uh, street rebuild off of Main Street there, uh, in 2021. That's 204,000. Things will change between now and then in funding, and so that, that, that may easily go back in. But, but, uh, so all of those projects and, uh, some adjustments to cost and scope uh, amount to, uh, our recommended, the 13.6 million dollar add. We've talked over the years about other projects. Uh, there's a list of them here. You know, we're not recommending any of them at this point, but they are all projects that are, uh, worthy of consideration. Continue.
Lynn?
Yes.
Just curious on the cost for Mallett Drive versus Ball Airport? That new section of Ball Airport?
Mm-hmm.
What's making Mallett so expensive? Is it?
That is, uh.
Aren't we expanding it to four versus two?
Yeah, it's, we're adding two new lanes, but it's also, um, there's a lot of utility relocation that's gonna happen there. I think that price includes curb and guttering that. Uh, and it's all the way from, uh, I think that price is all the way from Zach Lance to Solar or, or down there past Sholomar School. So, so it's a long section.
It just seems like with the bridges, we gotta do across Spring Creek for Ball Airport that there'd be a bigger price difference.
Well, the main thing about the Ball Airport, and I've been a proponent of it for a long time, is the traffic flows. When you start looking through the eyes of an MPO-type person, you look at, uh, Placido de Benavides the same way. Uh, it's not so much the developable land with the Ball Airport, but the fact that you could take, go from 87 to 77. And then, as is projected later on, all the way over to 59 Business.
I agree. I just was expecting Mallett to be a little bit cheaper than, than Ball Airport with those bridges.
It doesn't ever get any better, the longer you're here.
Going back to recap the capital improvement update, uh, I guess at the beginning. The 171.3 million dollars, that's what you have for proposed projects for 2017. The unappropriated, it's not in that number, it is. We don't have 19, 1.9 million dollars to play with.
I'm sorry. Which page are we on?
It's the unappropriated dollars for the 1.9 million.
Okay. That is, that would occur in 2022.
Right.
And we just haven't, that's so far out there, we didn't make a recommendation for it at this point.
So that's, in 2022, that's available. Okay.
Yeah. I believe that, I believe that's sales tax dollars too.
That's cents, not dollars?
Sales tax dollars.
Oh, okay.
No, it's dollars.
I heard you say cents. I said, oh my God.
No, it's dollars.
Okay.
A question, and I apologize for being all over the map, and I know we're not really talking about Placido de Benavides. Um, but tell me about what its, its initial construction is going to be, because, you know, now we're thinking about Mallett, and you just said about adding curb and gutter. Is Placido de Benavides also going to be just two lane for now? Can expand, but will it be curb and gutter?
It is two-lane concrete.
Two-lane concrete.
Curb and gutter.
Okay.
Boulevard section, much like the section that was constructed, or that section of Ball Airport that was constructed a couple of years ago.
So we won't be coming back to that same situation that we are looking at with Mallett?
Well, at some point in the future, we think traffic will, will need, will make that need to be expanded to four lanes. And at that point, you'd build the other half of the boulevard.
Okay. Thank you.
But we won't have to relocate utilities.
That's right.
We won't have to acquire right away.
They're all being put in for that now.
Yeah, that's why I'm sitting here thinking Mallett's not that old. How did we, how did we get ourselves here with Mallett? So it's good that we won't be doing that, if we can avoid it, for Placido.
Okay, uh, other needs. John Kaminsky last year talked about, uh, other needs the city has, not, not your traditional public works type CIP, but nonetheless, CIP projects. And so we've, uh, we've left it listed here. They are still, uh, needs of the city. We have not included those in, in our CIP recommendations to you. Uh, but they are still, uh, something to consider.
And just a comment, you may remember in this budget year, we have a feasibility. And just a comment, you may remember in this budget year, we have a feasibility study for the public safety facility. So, I know they've solicited proposals on that, and they're reviewing those. So, we're moving forward with that to determine what exactly we need in a public safety facility. That's why there's a question marked by the dollar amount.
Like the community center parking expansion, would that come out of the community center fund, not necessarily a CIP list?
Yes.
Okay.
Okay. So, that concludes the presentation part of this, all the slides I was planning on showing. So, if you have any discussion, or certainly if you would have any direction or consensus, especially for 2018, we would appreciate that.
Can you pull 2018 projects back up, and let's see if there's any specific questions on those?
Yes.
Since that's kind of, you heard the mayor say, maybe... Now, the Vine Street, when you get in front of the RV park, is also having problems where the sides are, you know, kind of, I don't know the technical term of that. But they're kind of falling off to the side. Now, I know that right down the hill, coming down the hill, may not be that bad.
I understand, yeah. For a driving surface, it doesn't appear that bad, but when I run on it, which I do constantly, it's, yeah, it looks really bad. So, I can see what you're saying now that I think about it. Between Red River and the bridge, from the bridge to the hill, it's a freeway.
What's the technical term when the road's starting to kind of fall off the sides there?
I call it sloughing off.
Okay, sloughing off, okay.
It is doing that.
Falling off, yeah, it's falling apart.
Sliding into the ditch.
Same thing with Ben Jordan, as it gets out close to Stockbauer. Suffers a lot from that same malady.
So, just nothing about a billion dollars wouldn't fix, is what I'm seeing here. Everybody seems a bit somber right now.
Lynn, can you go to the slide that has Crestwood Drive?
Yes. We start Crestwood and...
You have it open down here.
Yeah, Crestwood is part of it. That's the section from Main to Navarro.
I was just looking at the...
That's what Jeff was asking us to flip.
Start the other direction. And so, that's 3.5, and I think the other one was...
4.308.
4.3, so it's about an $800,000 difference there. We'd have to, probably have to kick out another project in 2018 to make that, if we want to leave it in 2018. If that's the direction, we'll certainly go back and look at that.
Kick out?
I know.
There's nothing to kick out.
Can we wait on the water talk?
That's a different fund.
Yeah, we've often said that this is like putting a puzzle together when we sit down and look at all the projects and look at the funding sources, and trying to make sure they fit within those funding sources and what we can afford for the year, so.
We can't get sales tax money?
I'm sorry.
We can't get sales tax money?
It's already being used. Already accounted for.
Yeah, that's sales tax.
That's Red River and Vine.
Can we get some more money from you guys?
Everything locally.
That's a good segue there, Ms. Scott. You know, I don't think we should be too depressed about this. This is a lot of good work we're doing. And, you know, I think for me, after so many years of watching these presentations, the story ends up always being about revenue. There's no shortage of projects, we have such a wonderful qualified staff that has brought projects to us. You know, we can debate about moving one here and there, which certainly does have merit, and we should do that. But my mind always refers back to how can we get the revenue up? And we are working on that through our economic development efforts. I really think, you know, maybe in the next few years, we land that big fish that will drive growth and revenue, will help us have a different CIP next year or the year after. My fingers are crossed, I want everybody, try to be positive. I think we are, I think we're gonna see some good growth opportunities. That little bit of money we invest in economic development's gonna pay off. You know, we saw what happened during Caterpillar and Eagle Ford Shale. We could have that times five easily within the next three years. So, I'm hopeful, you know, I'm excited for the next few years.
But in the meantime, we must plan, plan for the future. And the things we know we're going to need, it's clear that we're gonna need these. All we have to do is make our list and wait for Santa Claus to show up with a bucket full of money. Ain't gonna happen, but we still must make our list and must do our planning.
Right, right.
We can, Jeff, go back on the Crestwood comment, and we can see and come back and say, okay, if you want to do that, here's how we're gonna have to do it, we can do that easily, so. Not to belabor anything, but just a comment. You know, we've done this CIP process probably for about 15 years now, I think, but it has really given us a plan and a roadmap for how to accomplish these projects. And, you know, when you drive around town, if you pay attention to what's going on, there's a lot of work being done on our roadways and utilities that, yes, sometimes we have to do it in phases. But I have to tell you thank you, because it takes a lot of courage to stay with the plan when you can start getting pulled away and you lose your focus. But council has stayed focused on doing this plan. And, you know, we told y'all probably about 10 years ago, we were gonna hit this time when we're not gonna have the debt capacity. So, those that have been around a long time were forewarned. So, and it's coming to fruition, but well, you know, it's not, 21, 22, my goodness. If council decides to keep the debt service approximately the same, the projects that we're gonna be able to accomplish are unreal, so.
But each year, this list changes. At one time, Ball Airport was number three. It hasn't seen number three in a long, long time. Just to give you an idea, but it doesn't mean it's not on the list. And without money to match it, it is only that, it's only a list. My comments from a few months ago had to do with an enterprise fund, and I'm not sure I was very clear. So, I'm gonna make another attempt and to explain what I was talking about. We have a post-closure fund on the landfill, and it may be required by law. I don't even sure, TCQ requires that. But it means that you're gonna have additional expenses past what you can see, that you must have a post-closure fund. This is, and the landfill is an enterprise fund. On enterprise fund, you must consider all your costs, just as you and I might do and others might do, trying to, you know, we know we're gonna have to buy a truck next year or year after, start setting aside money. Well, I have noticed that we do set aside money in a water wastewater fund, but not to the extent we're talking about utilities when we do major things such as Crestwood or others. And so, I guess what I'm proposing is let's keep this in mind as we go through the budget process. Should we be planning, when we're talking about, let's say, Tanglewood, and 60% or so of that is underground utilities, should that be in the water wastewater fund? Well, we can't get there overnight. It's like many years ago, we had almost no reserve fund. If you had a hurricane come through, we were SOL. We have built up our reserve fund where it affects our bonding ratings and other things. I would like us to look at our water wastewater fund in that same light. I don't know if I'm being any clearer than I was last time, that's the bad part.
So, you're saying that you have a reserve, not only in the general fund, but in the water wastewater fund too?
Well, because the water wastewater fund is a fund that is supposed to cover its own cost, the costs of providing you with sewer and water, but we're not covering those costs completely, because we know we're gonna have to replace the sewers and water lines at some point, particularly on, like I said, Tanglewood or Crestwood or any of these others. It's a given, we got it on the list. But no funds are coming out of the water wastewater fund to cover that.
The Tanglewood, I thought I saw, was under the wastewater funds, that's where the other utilities in anticipation of 2024.
It's debt service, a revenue bond, and that's how we, I guess, and...
So, you're talking about a revenue bond?
No, I'm talking about building up a reserve fund in the water wastewater that addresses these issues, just like you would do if you know you're gonna need capital improvements in your home or your business.
I'm just trying to figure out, I don't know, Gilbert, to do $8 million?
No, you couldn't do it. I mean, it's just like, it took us 10 years before we got a reserve fund that was respectable enough to cover, for what is it, 20%?
25.
Okay.
And we do have a reserve, we do have a reserve in the utility funds, because we have to. But you're talking about an additional amount that is set aside for capital projects.
It's just to address the point that you know you're going to need this repair.
And that would probably take a rate increase.
Yes.
To start accumulating some additional funds.
It's better than a stick in the eye when you come up on a large project and you are looking for funds. Could we build up a small amount of reserve and use it in these projects? It's just a way of thinking about this, not necessarily adamant pro or con. But if it's supposed to be an enterprise fund, it is not addressing all the needs of that enterprise. I don't know if I'm being any clearer than I was the last time.
Yeah, you know, like in 2021, we have major utility projects worth 14.5 million, and then another eight, nine and a half, it was 12 million in 2022. I mean, that's $27 million almost, that in two years, you would eat down your reserve fund. But how long would you have to collect on your rates for 27 million?
Even if it was only, you collect a half a million, that's better than a stick in the eye when we got zip nothing.
Well, I think at the budget time, if anyone on here, this council wants to propose a rate increase, they certainly can. That's what we're talking about, period.
One of the things we've talked about internally, it needs to be done, is we do need to do a rate study to, for water and sewer. And so, we're probably gonna work toward getting that done, hopefully the summer or early fall or something.
There's still six other people on this council that need to make this decision. I'm just asking, are we fully considering all the burden on that fund? And if y'all feel like we are, then that's fine. I'm just trying to point out that perhaps we're not.
And when we do that rate study, we can take that into consideration, what we're talking about.
And would give us perhaps some guidance and direction.
Sure, absolutely. I think Gilbert's been trying to talk, and I haven't let him.
It's good conversation, I just wanna, trying to listen to Mr. Jalapaska. And of course, the rate study is an excellent idea, especially when you look at your whole rate structure. So, especially when you try to capture some depreciation into your rates to minimize the future impact of your costs and replacing those deals. But I think what Mr. Jalapaska is trying to say, if I'm correct, is that we have an opportunity in the coming years, we have some debt capacity on the revenue side, that's a given. You know, he just mentioned $14 million and et cetera. What would happen once you use that debt capacity up? You're back to square one, that you don't have that debt. I think what Mr. Jalapaska said, why not start planning now for a long-term planning for the future when that debt capacity no longer, you still have some type of resource that you can tap, and stew's do so, but not to the extreme. And I concur that I don't think you can raise, you know, $8 million on revenue. You only got about 22,000 customers, that's not gonna happen. But I think his point was that from a long-term view, in another 10, 15 years, you might be in a different position if you had a reserve being built to accommodate future past the five years and maybe another five years down the road further. I think that's where his direction is at.
He said it much better than me.
If we had that back years ago, in a way, we'd done that, but on one side of the cup nut, on the utility side. The utility side, we always done a $2 million utility capital replacement. But as you well know, when you have over $100 million in infrastructure assets of a utility, $2 million is not really a big debt. So, I think that's what his direction, he was going with.
And the point, and the point being to add to that, let's say we had a project, it was pick a number 10 million dollars, but we were able to pick a million dollars out of water wastewater, then it's $9 million, and you've just gone further down the road with less debt.
And the point he's trying to use on the closer side, I assume, is that we have, that's a 30-year life debt, without debt, liability situation. Years ago, we started implementing, within the rate structure, a recovery to accommodate that. It's, you know, $180,000, $170,000. But over the years, in 30 years, you're gonna have enough cumulative interest and everything else to handle that liability. So, it's more somewhat in that philosophy, applying that to something else, but on the long term. You're not gonna raise $8 million over the next five years on water rates, it's not gonna happen.
Ain't gonna happen.
You can't let me know, but it's not. Anyway, that's...
But anyway, I was just, it's a thought process. If we think in terms of that, perhaps we can get a little further down the road. Let's look at what a study might show us, how we compare with other places, and how reasonable we are, and what difference it might make. It's worth looking at.
And I don't wanna make any promise on comparing to others, because we have our own needs to take care of, and so, we've gotta cover those costs.
We have our own expenses and costs.
We do, and how we manage that, so.
That was probably the wrong words to use then.
Is there any other questions about these 18 projects that we're proposing? We've got the one about Crestwood, the mayor asked about Vine, so we can go in and look at those different sections on Vine. That's the only questions I've heard so far.
Is the sidewalk, was there a master plan for that? Like, do the street inventory, or...
We're working on developing, at the early stages of one, I'm barely identifying gaps right now and what would be required. A little bit different than the street inventory, because it doesn't assign a value to existing sidewalks.
Right, no rating, just sidewalk, yes or no? Okay, thank you.
And have we somehow stabilized woodwork? Because a while ago, it was, you know, a big panic, and now we're moving it down the road.
We have, we have with our own forces, done a lot of pavement repair out there and base replacement just to keep it drivable.
I don't think it's stabilized, though.
No, it's still, I mean, there's more work.
We're keeping it held together as best we can.
Because we put it back in 2019?
20...
No. 2020.
2020, I think.
Okay.
Just some serious point repairs, is what I would call it in...
Exactly.
Yeah, they were...
Yeah, it's back in 2020.
Spots were really bad, yeah.
That's what it is, point repairs.
We've added new things in, and same thing with Rital Ridge, we thought was a problem, although that one turned out like that can wait.
Well, I think we're making them hold together as long as we can. But when I look at the ratings on those streets, and especially the decline in those ratings over the past couple of years, you know, and the available money, my recommendations here are based on those three things. The initial rating, the decline I see occurring in those ratings, and finally, when's money available and how can I fit them?
What fund the money's coming out of? Two woodways gotta be general fund.
Right.
There's not any other questions? I wanna point something out that I found today, even though I've looked at this several times. If you go back to the very last section under Projects March 2017, and you look at your funding sources, when you get over to, I don't see it, Lynn, I've lost it. We're showing some funding under grants.
Right, I was just gonna ask.
Yeah.
That's not grants.
Those are sales tax, it needs to go over a column, so.
Okay.
I was wondering about that with Crestwood.
Yeah.
Yeah, there you go, under 19.
That's a copy paste there.
18, 18. So, if you notice, we're not fortunate enough to have any grants to help us repave these streets.
Yes, we got our list.
So, anyway. Paul and I are asking, and I know Paul's got a few things to say, but before Lynn sits down, this will be the last time he stands here doing a CIP presentation or any council presentation for us. His last day... He, his last day in the office is Friday. He retires at the end of April, so after 25 years of service to the city, I said a few words this morning, but this is for those of us here in the public. But job well done.
Thank you.
Lynn, I'd like to add, it's been a pleasure working with you.
Thank you all very much. Been a pleasure working with such visionary leaders.
Well, and, you know, the thing I want to say about Lynn, I said this morning, I named a few projects. But one of the things, you know, we talked about the service water treatment plant, the sewer plant, the street maintenance projects that, you know, the plan that he developed and brought forth and that y'all develop, you know, adopted. But the thing I forgot this morning, I want to make sure I mentioned that, is our waters, our water supply. And what Lynn has done to help us make sure that for generations to come, we have a good water supply. His bed-to-banks idea that was the first in the state. It took a little bit of getting TCUQ used to that. And that's when, you know, we were off of river water, but we were taking water out of our wells and running it down that outfall to the chagrin to some of our citizens and putting it back in the river. So we, we could still take water off the river, which helps with our treatment. That was a brilliant idea. That's just one of the many brilliant things Lynn has brought to us. But visionary leader, solid foundation, and he, he's leaving his department with a solid foundation. So it's always good. You know, I say, and you'll hear me say this, retirements are bittersweet. They're bitter for us, but they're sweet for him. So we're looking forward to continuing to work with Lynn. He's going to stay in the community, have a consulting firm. So, you know, we're, I'm excited for him. Sad for us, but excited for him, so, but thank you.
Thank you.
When we look at our percentage of our water supply and what we can do to increase it, almost magically by using OCR and ASR's projects and how they're already planned and how we already got there on the books, all we got to do is wait for the money or the need to show up depending, and council will move them up or down. But particularly the ASRs can double our capacity, and that's no small thing. There's very few cities in the whole state that can say that. Until you start comparing to others and what, what position they're in, particularly some fairly large ones, one just to the northwest of us, and, and they're got troubles.
We don't. Maybe we'll have to name a lift station after you. We, we could, I'm sure your, your coworkers will, will, could pick something. We'll, we'll, something better than a wastewater treatment plant, although that's a significant facility, so. It's kind of yours, you know that.
People have to be dead before then, so don't wish that upon them.
Yeah, yeah. But that, that wastewater treatment plant, you earned that. You earned it, it's, you're, you're all over that plant in many ways, good and bad. Anyway, I, but yes, we'll miss you, but I know that you're not going anywhere. I expect to see you in this audience, and I wish you the best of luck in your private ventures. And very few, I can say this, having been in the public and private sector, very few people take such ownership of their job. It's rare, even in the private sector, you know. You, you own what you did, and you, you did it as if it was your own money and your own project, and it showed, so. Best of luck to you, Lynn, and we, we look forward to seeing you out here. Maybe we get to work with you someday as a contractor.
I certainly hope so.
Okay. Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Well, I don't think this is his last presentation with council.
Oh, no. All right.
Thank you, Lynn.
Does that conclude our business?
That does.
Okay, thank you, we're done.
Thank you, thank you.